Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call the West Covina City Council meeting of June 7th to order. We will start first with our invocation by Pastor Mason Okubu from the Emmanuel First Lutheran Church, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance from Councilwoman Shelley Sanderson. Please rise.
Good evening. Thank you. Let us bow heads in prayer. Father in heaven, we thank you for your many blessings, and particularly the blessings of your son, Jesus Christ. We thank you for the leadership of our council members, and we ask your blessings upon them, grant them wisdom as they seek to lead our city. Father in heaven, we ask for these things, in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Please join with me to the pledge to our flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk roll call.
Mayor, Chairman Horford.
Here.
Mayor Protem, Vice Chairman Toohey.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Armbrust.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
City Attorney report out from closed session.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The record should reflect that the City Council and Community Development Commission did hold its special joint meeting as listed on the notice of special joint meeting this evening, and this is my report from that closed session. With regard to the first item, conference with legal counsel existing in litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9A, City Council did consider the two items as listed on the notice of joint meeting. With regard to the Christopher Chung versus City of West Covina matter, the record should reflect that all members of the City Council were present on that matter. There was a report provided by staff, however, no final action was taken on that case, and nothing further to report. With regard to the City of West Covina versus Rehab Financial Corporation et al., the record should reflect that all council members were present for that item. There was a briefing provided by staff. The City Council did vote to dismiss that action on a vote of four to zero with Council Member Toohey abstaining. With regard to the second item, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7.6 concerning the various employee organizations as listed on the notice of special joint meeting, the record should reflect that all council members were present. There was a report provided by staff, however, no final action was taken. Nothing further to report on those items. Finally, with regard to item number three, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.8 concerning the real property parcel numbers as listed on the notice of joint, special joint meeting, the record should reflect that all members of the Community Development Commission Board were present. There was a report provided by staff, and no final action was taken. Nothing further to report on that item. That concludes my report out from closed session.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
I have no changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. There are no presentations tonight, so we'll move into oral communications. This is the time for residents to speak on matters involving the West Covina City Council. First Speaker, Mr. John Schumaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. This isn't a direct item that the council members would have a lot of say in, but one of the things that's very important is, as all of you have read in the paper, the things that are going on with our school district, and I think it's very important that all of you learn what's going on as much as possible because of the impact that it does have on our community. You know, when you're looking at a school district that's gone from being the example that you could look at of how to run a district to one that people are beginning to laugh at, that has an impact on what happens in our city. You know, when you have people who are on the school board who diametrically oppose anything that you guys want to do that's a benefit to the public, that has an impact on our city. You know, it's absolutely ridiculous when you look around at the schools and you see the amount of space that the schools do have, and how if there was cooperation between the school board and the City Council, the things that could be done for the members of our community around, and it just doesn't happen. Prime example is the swimming pool that normally is open, that the city will open and pay a lot to have for the community members to come swim. It's in an absolute disarray, and part of it is the school board doesn't care about fixing it, or at least three members of the school board don't care about doing anything. They're more concerned about making sure that a company in New York gets its $100,000 instead of spending the $100,000 on the community here where it should be spent. You know, and those are the types of things that do have an impact. People who want to come to the city, what they're beginning to read now is a school system that's falling apart. Who wants to come live in our city if that's the case? You know, so I hope all of you will go out and read the different things and become, you know, knowledgeable what's there, because people will. You are opinion makers. You are leaders in our community. They're going to ask you, what's going on? What can we do and those types of things? And hopefully, you know, you'll have the knowledge to be able to answer those questions because they're coming up all over. You know, different places I go that I'd never even think of pop up, you know, what's going on in West Covina? You know, it's what they say. You know, and it does have a negative impact on the city. And where you can help, you know, shape the opinion that, you know, to change some of the things that are going on, I hope that all of you will, because it does, you know, affect us, and unfortunately, the publicity we're getting isn't good. You know, sometimes it's probably kind of nice that at least the five of you aren't being poked at by the newspaper. You know, it's nice to be able to stay away from that area. But at the same time, you know, I hope, again, like I said, to become knowledgeable and see what's there, because the amount of money that's leaving our community, taxpayers are paying to send it to New York, you know, is absolutely insane. It's not coming here, it's not helping the programs that we need in our community, in our schools, and the things that could be done jointly between, you know, two governmental agencies that have a say in what goes on in the lives of our community. So if you guys ever have any questions, you know where you can find me, and I'll be more than happy to answer them or direct you to people who can. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Joaquin Castaneda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, for the opportunity to speak, as well as the community. My name is Joaquin Castaneda, District Director for Assemblymember Roger Hernandez, and I just wanted to read a letter that the Assemblymen addressed to the Mayor and as well as the Council. Dear Mayor Horford, thank you for the consideration of legislation I've introduced that would ensure that government is transparent and held accountable when dealing with taxpayer funds. As a former mayor and council member of West Covina and the school board for a well-unified school district, I understand the important role local governments play in providing critical services for its constituents. It is equally important that local governments analyzing state legislation do so with that most accurate and up-to-date information available. After reviewing the analysis of AB 524, excuse me, 527, AB 834, and AB 1338 completed by the City of West Covina, I would like to provide the following developments and clarifications for the Council to consider when discussing these bills. Regarding AB 527, city analysis states that legislation penalizes staff for doing their job even if they are not qualified to determine if the matter is a conflict or not, end quote. After discussion in the Assembly Committee on Local Government, I am working closely with the League of California Cities to address their concerns. To date, I have amended the bill so that only the person with the financial interest will be penalized should a violation occur, and that employees in managerial or supervisory positions will be held accountable. This bill passed the Assembly floor with bipartisan support from two-thirds of the Assembly body and is now in the Senate. Regarding AB 834, this bill does not impact local governments' ability to enter into a evergreen contract, nor does it abolish evergreen contracts. This bill simply requires a review of contracts that include evergreen clauses by the local governing body and would not impact the contracting party's ability to secure financing for its project. As you are aware, oversight is a responsibility of all elected officials. We have an obligation to the public that we serve to ensure contracts that are made from our policy decisions use taxpayer funds most effectively. Regarding AB 1338, this bill passed the Assembly floor with unanimous and bipartisan support. This bill also enjoys the support of the California Building Industry Association, the Taxpayer Redevelopment Association, Housing California, and the Howard Jarvis Taxpayer Association. Thank you for considering these important pieces of legislation, and I look forward in working with the City of West Covina in the future. Please know that my staff is both, please know that my staff in both Sacramento and at the District Office and myself are always available to meet with you regarding any issues that may arise in the 57th Assembly District. Should you have any questions regarding my legislative package, please contact my Legislative Director, Mandy Lee, in my Capitol Office. That's a 916-319-2057. Sincerely, Roger Hernandez, Assistant Majority Whip, Assemblymember for the 57th Assembly District. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak.
Councilwoman Toohey.
I just have one question. I know they just had before them the legislation that would treat state legislature similar to how elected officials at the local level are bound by certain gift limits rules, and they didn't vote for that. Is that not part of his transparency bill to hold him accountable to the same rules that he's trying to make for other people? Because I know right now you guys presently can have them take your family and friends over to Europe on a supposedly education trip, and that's not considered a gift, even though they may spend 50,000 to 100,000 entertaining you, where a council member would be in prison for that. Are you guys looking to do transparency so anything done at the state level against local elected officials in the future apply to our state legislature equally?
I don't know the specifics on that, but I definitely will have Mandy Lee, our Legislative Director, contact you directly on the specifics on that, on the piece of legislation you're speaking of.
And I appreciate that, because I'm just saying it's done at congressional level, no different. They have certain rules that apply to everyone else, but for them, if you guys all remember in the old days, the check scandal where they bounced all the checks. At the state level currently, the state loaned over $100 million to employees, and they forgot to collect it. Now, since they forgot to collect, some of the money will be waived, and the state controller is not prosecuting those people. The same program was done at the City of Bell, and they're prosecuting those people. But the state agencies, the state department heads of those agencies that did those loans are not being held accountable the same way, and it seems like the jail door should swing both ways for those people as well as the people in Bell.
That may be under FPC guidelines, but I will definitely have Mandy Lee, our Legislative Director, specifically contact the City Manager or the City Attorney regarding your request, and I'll make sure to get that information to you. You're very welcome.
Okay, Lloyd Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Horford and Councilmen. First, I'd like to say thank you to the Katushi Foundation for the support, the Memorial Day celebration we had at the American Legion Hall, and thanks to Councilmembers Toohey and Lane for being able to show up. Next, you know, what I'd like to say is that almost week after week is what we hear up here is two things usually come up: cell towers and the coverage of the cable TV for council meetings. You know, I'd like to have something, you know, we definitely need cell towers. They're definitely not going away. Anybody that has a cellphone knows that. I would like to see if this council could consider in the future, when we can, how about combining them? You know, people say, I can combine cell towers with our coverage. Well, future cell towers that have to go up in the City of West Covina, why can't a portion of that, like 1% of that, be put into a special fund that would go for coverage of our council meetings? This way, none of the money would be coming out of the general fund to cover this, and every new cell tower that goes up, a portion of that will stay in that one fund, but they're mainly to cover anything that has to do mainly just with the council meetings. This is something, I know we can't do it right now, but it was something I hope that we can look at for in the future. What we're doing is that we're telling the folks that we need cell towers. They're not going away. But we're also looking at the residents, and we're telling them, you know what? This might be a way that we might be able to support putting our coverage back on for our council meetings without taking the money out of the general fund. So I hope that we can consider that for in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, Lloyd, just unfortunately, that is general fund money. All the cell tower money is general fund.
Could it be, if you guys voted on it, if there's something that could be up, that a portion of that, I'm just saying, could there?
You can, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, if something that the council can do, if you could look into it and see if there's something that you can vote on, say we want maybe 1% of new cell towers going towards that? It's up to the council.
Yeah.
In the future, not right now.
Yeah, this year's budget is pretty bad. Okay, Don Farnold.
Councilmembers, I'm here tonight on two topics. One is going to be Agenda Item Number 10. The second item that I'd like to talk to you about is the every 15-minute program that we recently conducted in the City of La Puente and Oakallis High School. That was on the 19th and 20th, and as part of that, Charles Calderon from the 58th District presented us with certificates to give to sponsors, so Mayor Horford, if you would please come down and accept this.
Sure.
The second item I'd like to speak to is Agenda Item Number 10, leasing a portion of the BKK radio tower for our radio systems for the Rowland Unified School District. I provided you with a two-page document that shows the number of students that reside in the City of West Covina that attend schools in the Rowland Unified School District. The three schools that are highlighted in yellow are the only three schools that are actually in the City of West Covina. The remaining schools are in the City of Walnut, Rowland Heights, and La Puente. By us moving our radio equipment from Rowland High School to the BKK Tower will give us a much better reception for our area and will provide us with a better response to the schools and the students and the communities that we serve in. So on behalf of the Rowland Unified School District, Superintendent Marriott, myself, and the Rowland School Police Department, we appreciate your consideration in passing Agenda Number 10 for us to move up to the BKK Tower.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes oral communications. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items to be pulled from the consent calendar?
Will make a motion to approve the consent?
A motion and a second.
Second.
Second by Armbrust. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Okay, this matter set for public hearing for the setting of the assessment rates for maintenance, West Covina Landscape Maintenance District Number 4, 6, and 7. City Clerk, will you verify proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
At this time, I'll show up in the public hearing on the West Covina Landscape Maintenance District Number 4, 6, and 7 for fiscal year 2011, 2012. First, there'll be a staff report, then we will hear comments from the public. City Manager, who will present the staff report?
Excuse me, Mr. Yatsi will do the report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Horford, members of the City Council. Tonight's public hearing is required annually to renew the landscape maintenance districts 4, 6, and 7. The districts were created at the request of the original developer in lieu of forming a homeowners association. The funds collected are used to maintain landscaping, irrigation, hardscape, drainage, pasaeos, and slopes. The rates for Maintenance District 4 and 6 are now capped by Proposition 218 and will not be increased this year. The funds will be available to continue to pay for ongoing maintenance and minor upgrades and repairs. For Maintenance District 7, staff is recommending a 2% increase to cover ongoing maintenance improvements. The increase will ensure ongoing maintenance and also keep the reserves stable. If no increases are taken, the reserves will dwindle and will not cover the cash flow in future years. The reserves in the maintenance districts are necessary for cash flow and future capital improvements and also possible emergency repairs. And with that, I'll ask if there's any questions.
Do we have any questions regarding the Landscape Maintenance Districts 4, 6, and 7? Okay, seeing none, we will now, Madam City Clerk, have you received any written protests, objections, or comments concerning the levying and collection of assessments within West Covina Landscape Maintenance Districts Number 4, 6, and 7?
None received.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We will now open up the public hearing to public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing and ask for Councilmember comments. Any comments? Do we have a motion?
Some.
Okay, this is a motion, and we will not read the heading of the resolution, so we have a motion by, was it Sanderson?
Yes.
Okay, and second by Armbrust. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, four to one. Okay, Mayor, Councilmember reports, item number 20 on the agenda. This kind of ties in with a little bit of what Councilmember Toohey was talking about. The only caveat I would request on this, let me first explain what my feeling is on the matter. Transparency is great when government follows it, all forms of government, and fortunately, there's a lot that goes on in Sacramento that isn't transparent. The budget is, Quagmire, and everything is locked up behind closed doors. Lobbyists entertain our elected officials, and they don't have to conflict themselves out, and the Brown Act isn't part of their repertoire, so there's numerous things that, you know, that we do at the local level here, which I think are good, that the state officials enforce upon local officials, yet they don't follow them themselves. So I had suggested that we work with our legislature to introduce some legislation. What I would like to do, rather than work with them, is to have our staff basically provide us with some legislation. That's what I really want, is to create some legislation. I want to go to our San Gabriel Valley COG and to other organizations and to buy in, get their buy-in on support for it, because I really think that some of the stuff that's going on in Sacramento is not in the best interest of anybody in the state of California, and I think the more transparency that we offer, the better. So that's what my request was. Councilmember Toohey.
I'll go ahead and make, I'll support it, I'll second it. That was your motion, and just to continue on this, I don't think, I don't know if everyone's been reading the articles in the LA Times about the PERS scandal. One of the people was bought by the people that benefit from the PERS organization, a condo in Tahoe. That was legal under state law. That's not even banned still right now. We lost billions in investment schemes. Why everyone else benefited from it? Some people didn't even make really a capital investment in the Santa Clarita housing project, I believe, near the Tahoe Ranch, where that project alone lost $1 billion, if I'm not mistaken, of CalPERS money, where the people that were actually doing the development had very little or none invested in it. It was all CalPERS and a relationship, and that, to me, is scary. Of that money, and all the money of all that PERS has lost us, $70 million was the City of West Covina's CalPERS account. That was lost in this investment scandal by these same individuals, and frankly, they should be held accountable. As we march local elected officials like Bell once again across the news, I don't see the DA or the Attorney General arresting the people at the state level, because sometimes at the state level, some of the people that are in charge of the investigation were the ones sitting on the PERS board. So it's kind of ironic. Who's watching what? Or are they telling you to watch over here, or are they doing something different over there? That, to me, is sad. It was our taxpayers' dollars lost. We have no say in how they invested, and we have to make up the difference now due to our losses at you, the taxpayers' expense. You will suffer the cuts. As our PERS bill goes up $5 million over the next two years, you will suffer the cuts in services. Why the people in the state legislature and the people in constitutional offices, to me, allow the money to be misappropriated, stolen, or bribed their way through this situation? It's absolutely a tragedy what's going on, and again, local residents, local cities will all suffer the consequences of what happened with the PERS investment scandal. And what's also funny about it all, when you actually see the contract, I know everyone talked about how much city managers were making and all this other stuff. When you see how much the CalPERS executive person was making, it is, I think they made The state fund, which is a joint-owned agency, an insurance agency jointly owned by the State of California, they made $850,000. Plus, we flew the executive back and forth from Denver, Colorado, at an expense of $99,000 a year to the State of California, to fly him back and forth. And these are the people making legislation, telling you to watch local government. My God, you really need to pay attention to what's happening at the state level and really read what's going on, because it's what you don't get to see, because you, the public, don't get to testify when they're voting on the bills, only when it's in a committee where you may be given an opportunity. They don't have free, open forums like this where unlimited people can speak, even though they talk about transparency. They allow certain people to speak, and then when it goes actually to the Senate or the Assembly floor, you're not allowed to speak. That's only for them. And prior to that vote, they meet in private with a majority of the state legislature and tell you how the different people are going to vote. That's called a Brown Act at this level. At that level, you call it good government. We can't meet more than three of us and come to a conclusion on an item outside of this public venue, and the state government has done each and every day, and they call that good government. I think we really need to see what's happening at the state level, and I totally support this bill.
Councilwoman Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with my colleagues, and I think something that's gone on wrong for way too long. Interestingly, getting into government many, many years ago, seeing how everything worked, I was quite surprised. I actually like how cities work. I mean, if you're a resident, you have a problem, you come down here and you tell us about it, and we work on it. Can you do that at a state or federal government level? Absolutely not. Who's going to fly to Sacramento? If anything, I think these people need more regulations than anybody else. I just think it's insanity personally, and the stuff that I see that's going on with our society today is very sad, and this is just not even a baby step towards the right direction. And I think that people need to stand up and start shouting to our government because things aren't right. And sitting here, I know there's not a whole lot we can do, but we can try. So I appreciate the mayor bringing this to our attention, and I sure as heck hope, you know, I'd be willing to fly to Sacramento, but I don't want to spend the money on our city's back and our taxpayers. Isn't that sad? So I think this is a great direction, and we need to honestly stick together, all of us as a community, as taxpayers, and work on these types of things. So thank you for bringing it.
Councilwoman Lane.
Yeah, I agree with my fellow councilmembers. I think, you know, there's some discrepancies here. The State Controller's Office, they require cities to post compensation and benefits of all of our employees, but they don't have to do the same. So I think what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and I think they should as well have to post what they're doing up there, because we have a right as citizens to know what's going on in our state and what they're getting paid as well as everybody else. So once again, if, you know, we're all required to do it, and I think that's fine, that's very transparent, and we should do it, but I think we have a right as residents and citizens of this state to know what everybody else is doing as well. So with that, thank you again, Mr. Mayor, for bringing this forward.
Okay. Councilwoman Armbrust, do you want to say?
I just concur with everybody.
Okay. So if we could have staff bring back, I think what I'd like to do is have a resolution from our council, basically, we could, so we could send it to other cities to build support for at least the Brown Act at a minimum, the disclosure of salaries, and some of the other things that the state has pushed on local government recently and maybe over the past few years, and some of the lobbyist rules, I think, like to see us take that, send it to all the cities in Southern California, Northern California, and see if we can build some support for openness and full disclosure, because I think what we see is a lot of behind-the-door deals that aren't in the best interest of all of us in California. So with my motion, and Councilwoman Toohey second, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Okay, AB 1, 2, 3, 4, any reports? Okay, next item on the agenda is the Finance Department. This is the meat and potatoes tonight. This is the meat and potatoes tonight, the 2011-12 fiscal year preliminary budget review. City manager, who will present the budget?
I'll have Mr. Bachman present the budget, but just a couple of points that you're gonna see tonight in the presentation. One is that the, the budget that you're gonna see is going to be reduced from about a seven point three million dollar gap or deficit, if we remain status quo, down to about a one point eight million dollars. Two, that the budget continues to maintain frontline public safety as our priority. Three, that the budget as presented incorporates no layoffs. Four, that we'll be returning back to the council with additional recommendations to further reduce the one point eight million dollars, one point eight million dollar gap. And then finally, if we continue to stick to the direction based on the conversations, or based on the budget proposal, we should be able to have a balanced budget by next year is our goal. So, Mr. Bachman?
All right, thank you. I'm gonna walk you through, before we get into the actual budget for this year, kinda walk you through some of the major financial events that's caused this, the situation that we're facing. It's not a situation that's unique to West Covina. Most cities that rely on sales tax, property tax, and are, you know, in the public retirement system are facing very similar issues. So when we, we sat here about two years ago, right after the recession had already had taken hold, we looked at this as it was gonna hit us in three different phases. And being sales tax was gonna be the first one, because actually in the late part of, middle of 2008, sales tax already started to drop significantly. We knew because of the, the impact on the housing market and commercial real estate, that property tax was gonna, at a later point, take a, take a significant hit. And because of the losses in the stock market in, in the late 2008 year, because PERS lags two years when they set their rates, we knew a couple of years ahead of time that our pension costs were gonna rise significantly in the third years. So just to put a little bit more detail behind those issues. Sales tax, the good news is it's finally starting to rebound. The decline started in fiscal year 2007, eight. Over a three-year period, we saw the sales tax reduced by twenty-three percent. A large part of that was in the auto industry. You know, we've got, you know, to one point where we, we have, you know, a number of dealerships that are almost not performing at all. June 2010 was the first quarter that we saw year-over-year increase after three consecutive, after twelve negative quarters. So based on the growth that we're projecting, it's gonna be about another three years before we reach the pre-recession levels. And part of that is because those pre-recession levels in 2006, 2007, we believe are overinflated due to people spending more than they typically would, driven by the equity in their, in their homes. Property tax was the, the second one that was gonna hit. And this isn't, it started to decline two years later in fiscal year 2009, ten. The drop here has not been as significant as, as in sales tax. And we've experienced about a five percent reduction over last year and this current year. We're expecting it to flatten out and then rise very slowly. This is something that we saw similar to what happened in the early nineties, where you saw a big run-up in housing values, then a big drop-off. And it took a long time and didn't really start seeing rises in assessed valuation till the early part of the two thousands, two thousand, two thousand and one. The one thing still lingering over this is commercial appeals. There's a number of commercial appeals out there, but, and while they're all, most of our commercial property is in redevelopment project areas, the total assessed valuation for the city affects the VLF and LUP portion of our property tax, which is roughly half of our property tax. So there could be some spillover effect from the commercial appeals into the general fund. And again, we're projecting another three years to reach the, the pre-recession levels, just because we expect growth to be very slow as the housing market starts to rebound. There are some positive signs. There's some new commercial construction going on in a number of different places that we, we think should, should help that. And that's why we're a little bit more optimistic. That's why the, the drop hasn't been as significant in this area. The, the third issue was the rising pension costs. And this is something we, we've known's been coming. It was supposed to hit us all in the eleven, twelve fiscal year. PERS changed the way that they, they, they set their, their contribution rates, due in large part to political pressure. So instead of hitting us all at once in one fiscal year in eleven, twelve, they spread that increase over the, the, the next three years. The problem started with PERS lost twenty-eight percent over a two-year period in oh eight, oh nine. And the real significance of that is, is their, the deviation from their assumed rate of return, which is a positive seven and three-quarter percent, is actually forty-three percent. So they've lost almost forty-four percent of what they were expecting over that two-year period. And while PERS gained thirteen point three percent last fiscal year, and they're up in double digits again this year, although I think more recently that's probably backed off, given the, the performance of the stock market, that thirteen percent increase is only a five and a half percent deviation from their seven and three-quarters percent assumption. So to put it all in perspective, it would take eight straight years of thirteen percent increases to make up for that forty-three percent loss. So I'm not sure that's something that any of us really expect to happen. And as an indication of that, we received, PERS earned double-digit returns from 2004 to 2007. And if you look at those, those, those periods of time, back in that period of time, you only saw a very slight decrease in the rates. And that's because of the fifteen-year smoothing of investment returns that PERS uses. So these rates are gonna stay high for, for quite some time. And translating the rates into the costs, our rate for, for pension costs has doubled over the last seven years, based on the losses we experienced in oh eight, oh nine. They're projected to increase another forty-six percent over the next three years. You know, looking at the larger span, there's a ten million dollar increase over 2003, four to 2013, fourteen. We've looked at some ways to, to mitigate these cost increases. Our costing, you know, our miscellaneous, as a percentage of pay rate, is projected to go up ten percent of pay in the next three years. And our safety rate is projected to go up thirteen percent of pay over the next three years, and continue to rise slightly after that. We're looking at cost sharing with, with the employees to, to help pay this cost. We're negotiating the employees to pay their eight percent with the miscellaneous groups who are, who contracts expire at the end of this year, to pay that, that eight percent. We're also looking at two-tier pension system. This is a much more longer-term solution, but we've already implemented it with the miscellaneous groups last year as part of the contract negotiations for new hires. And we've negotiated that with the, the FIRE Association for the, the new employees that'll be hired under the FEMA grant program. The other one, and not as much talked about, but the, the trends are very similar. You don't hear quite as much, because the numbers aren't quite as large in terms of manual dollars. But retiring medical is the other, the other time bomb out there that's really gonna hit us. And some of our contracts call for premiums equal to the Kaiser plus-two rate, which means whatever that rate, or Kaiser two-party rate, whatever that rate is, the city's obligated to pay. The cost to the city has doubled in the last four years. And over that same, or actually, it's about a seven-year period from oh four to eleven, it's increased by two hundred and fifty-one percent. The reason for this, and this is a, this graph here, it's a much longer period of time. We're required under GASB forty-five to, to show what our liabilities are under this program. This is a new requirement that came into effect in the last couple of years. We do an actuarial every two years to, we, we must present this financial information as part of our financial reporting. This is a chart that's based off of the data from the last actuarial that we did two years ago, 2009. The unfunded liability at that time was forty-five million dollars. That's compared to an unfunded liability in our pension accounts of sixty-two million dollars. The reason for the growth, and this is a continuation of what we saw on the prior slide, is that medical costs historically grow much faster, typically about three times as fast as CPI. And this, this is something that the city really needs to, to look at capping. We've started some discussions with some of the safety groups as far as cost sharing, how we can, you know, get the employees to help contribute to this, to this type of benefit, using a different funding. Right now, we, we're on a pay-as-you-go basis, which means we pay premiums in the year that they're due. We're looking at some methods where we can set additional monies aside early on, where you can invest that money and earn a greater return, which will in turn reduce the city's long-term costs. It costs you more in the short term, but it'll save you significant dollars in the long term. And so what this leaves us with is, is a budget that, that has grown out of balance, and the red line being the expenditures and the green line being the revenues. And up through, up through 2006, seven, we were balanced, and this is operating in expenditures, and it excludes capital project. In previous, till oh six, oh seven, we were still doing some capital projects in the, the general fund. And after that, you can see the widening of the, you know, the gap between the, the, between the revenues and the expenditures. In 2009, ten, is when we started making reductions, when the revenue started to drop off. And that's why they, we, we settled into that period of time of about a three to four million dollar gap set. At that point in time, we had some significant reserves, and that's something we could, we decided we could live with. But as we get into eleven, twelve, that gap starts to widen again. And again, do mostly, you know, the revenues are starting to turn around. But the, the, the big number here is the pension costs. And the, their growth over the next few years are really what's driving this widening of the gap. It leaves us with a general fund reserve that, as you can see over the last number of years, has declined. The green part of the, the bar being the cash reserve and the, the yellowish bar being the, the total reserve. That money, that portion of the reserve is, is basically the money that's loaned to the redevelopment agency, which is about twenty-three million dollars. That money is charged interest rate by the general fund and generates about two million dollars a year. So that's, that's of a significant value to the city to, to maintain that arrangement. Under the status quo scenario, we would be out of cash at the end of the year. We're projecting a six point four million dollar reserve at the end of the current fiscal year, and the status quo deficit being at seven point three million dollars. Obviously, we're gonna make some recommendations that are gonna reduce that. That's just not a, the approach that we, that we could take.
Councilmember Tuie, any question?
Tom, the question is on, there is a new legislation by the state to potentially cap the interest rate. We could charge the money loan to us. Do we have an update on that, and what, what was the financial hit? Well, what do we charge ourselves currently?
We're charging, for the most part, we're charging ten and a half percent.
And what were we gonna, what was the new legislation proposing?
It was the...
Three?
It's roughly in the three percent range. It would be significant hit. It would be, that's gonna lower to about six, six hundred thousand? Six hundred thousand, so it'd be about a one point, one point four million dollar hit in revenue if that, if that legislation is to pass.
And that's another issue. If that legislation goes forward, we have to reduce services again, one point four million additional, based on the state again deciding what's best to do in the city of West Covina.
Yeah, and that's interesting, because if you were to go out in the market today and issue bonds in the redevelopment area, you'd be paying seven percent, which is, we can't even charge that. According to the state, we wouldn't even be able to charge what we would have to, to do if we went out into the market to borrow. So, yeah, that's a good comment. What that leaves us with, we had a three, three point eight million dollar deficit in the current year. Revenues increased by eight hundred and eighty thousand, about a two and a half percent increase. Expenditures increased four point six million dollars, about half a million in the, in the non-safety departments, and about four million dollars in the safety departments. That leaves us with roughly fifty million dollars in revenue against fifty-seven point three million dollars in expenditure on the status quo basis, which generates that seven point three million dollar deficit. The, the basis for the, the four point six million dollar increases is, a larger part of it is the pension rate increases. This is the first year, and this is the biggest increase in this first year. The safety rate of that thirteen percent over the three years, a little over six percent of that is in this first year. It goes up about two percent the second year, and then about five percent the third year. The miscellaneous rate, the same thing. It's about four and a half percent increase, other ten percent increase this year, about one and a half next year, and then a little, you know, the, the balance in the third year. The one point six million, public safety makes up one point three million of that. The miscellaneous cost is about three hundred thousand. The public safety MOUs that were deferred two years ago, they have increases due beginning in July. That accounts for about one point three million dollars of the increase. The end of the furlough program, that's been in place with the, with the miscellaneous programs, a little over four hundred thousand. We're looking at more of a long-term structure with the miscellaneous employees this year, and that'll be discussed as we get into some of our reduction measures. The ambulance program that we had looked at the concept in last year's budget of, of transitioning one of our ambulances from an ALS to a BLS-type unit, which would have just, not the firefighter paramedics, but a reduced level of staffing there, which would have saved significantly. We weren't able to reach agreement with the, with the firefighters associated on that. So that was placed back into the budget due to the, to the constant staffing requirements of the MOU. You know, medical premiums continue to increase, that's one that's gonna, again, we talked about, you know, the, how, how much they increase. What we paid at employees is tied to the Kaiser family rate. So Kaiser's typically doesn't increase as much as others, so there's a little bit of a, you know, a plus there. We have city council election next year. There's various salary and benefit increases. Those are, those would be merit increases. Those would also be other benefits that aren't included here, that have that increase in cost over time. And the last item is liability, and workers' comp are seeing more workers' comp costs. We're also seeing a rise in our liability expenses. So it leaves us, general fund revenues, this is not, this picture hasn't changed a whole lot. Property tax, sales tax make up about sixty percent, and as, as they go, so that the general fund generally goes. Couple, you know, franchise taxes is, is a very slow, but it's steady growth. It's, it's somewhat reduced, and, you know, there's been a little bit of a reduction this year, which is a first. Interest income, that's mostly the revenue from the redevelopment agency. It's a little over two million dollars. The A and O charge at four percent is a little bit interesting, because that's what we charge back to our non-general fund. That's we charge back administrative costs to grant funds, special funds, redevelopment agency. And as we've lowered our, our staffing, our costs on the general fund side, there's less money to charge out. So this was a number that used to be around two million dollars. Now it's down about one point six million dollars. And as we continue to reduce, reduce staff, that has a, kind of a wraparound effect, where it affects the revenue side to some extent. Ambulance fees have been fairly constant in the one point seven million dollar range. Business license has been probably the one revenue that actually has grown. We've gotten pretty aggressive on the, on the collection. We've gone after the cell tower companies, have generated a lot of money from those. So that's one of the areas that's actually grown. The CDC sales tax reimbursement, that's an agreement we structured about five years ago. That's been impacted to some extent by the drop in sales tax. And again, on the, the expenditure side, you know, the fifty-seven million, forty-five million is for safety, twelve million for non-safety. Pretty much the same ratios, roughly seventy-eight percent is, is public safety, with police department taking about half of the general fund budget. And the rest, you know, spread fairly equally. Public Works is a larger one, but everything else spread pretty equally among the support departments. One item that has become more critical as we've gone on through the last couple of years, and as our reserve has dwindled down, is our cash flow. And a large part is driven by the fact that we've, we've reduced our, our cash reserves down to about six point four million dollars as of the end of this fiscal year. The general fund itself runs about negative twelve million dollars through the first five months of the year. And that's due, due a large part to property tax being the largest revenue source, doesn't come into the city starting until December. But again, the state's taken some actions in the last couple of years that have significantly affected our cash flow by taking revenues that we used to receive on a monthly basis. And now they pay them twice annually to us, once in January and once in May. So it's seven months into the fiscal year before we see even some of these revenues that we used to see every month. And the VLF is a good example of that. And when they swap that for property tax, it gets, it's, you know, on this whole different payment schedule, that's roughly six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month, or three point nine million dollars. The, the state has caused us to run negative through the first six months of the year, because we don't receive that money till January. The triple flip, where they, they flipped, they flipped sales tax for property tax, the same type of effect, to the extent of one point five million dollars. So, you know, they're about five and a half million dollars of our, of our twelve million dollar, almost half of our negative cash flow is due to actions that the state has taken in the last couple of years to, to balance their, their needs. Another issue is providing cash flows for the maintenance districts. And a lot of our, a couple of our larger maintenance districts don't have sufficient reserves to, to cover their cash flow. So five hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the citywide district, and another almost million dollars in the sewer maintenance district that the general fund has to cover, or whatever other reserves we have on hand has to cover. We use the pool, we use a pooled cash system, which means all funds from, you know, from a cash standpoint, the cash is pooled. So we cover it that way. But as we reduce the reserves, it makes, you know, the importance of having sufficient reserves in these maintenance districts, and I understand that's part of the rate-setting process, that, that becomes more of an important issue. And finally, our insurance, our self-insurance funds are being depleted. A couple of years ago, we transferred some money to the general fund to, to help reduce the general fund deficit in that year. We did that at one time. But we're also seeing higher costs in those, in those funds too. So those reserves are being depleted, and those are, you know, they're... So those reserves are being depleted and those are, you know, they're up closer to ten million now and now they're down closer to seven, eight million dollars. Um, as those get depleted, that again affects our ability to do, um, to meet our cash flow needs the last couple of years. This will be the second year coming up where we've done short-term borrowing, we call them trans, tax for revenue anticipation notes. Um, we actually just did the pricing today on, on those. But that's a, you know, it's a necessity that we've done because we don't have sufficient cash to meet our negative cash flow for the first six months of the year. So given all that, as we approached the budget, um, the goal was to significantly reduce the budget deficit in, in the eleven, twelve fiscal year. And what, you know, we brought, what we'll see tonight is bringing it down from seven-point-three million down to one-point-eight million dollars. And a lot of this, you know, you can't deficit spend forever. Um, but a lot of it is now we're getting to the point where we're, our reserves are almost down to zero. And if we were to keep on this path, our cash reserves would, would be depleted in the next fiscal year. We're also want to return, part of the goal was to return in the first three months of the fiscal with the plan to further look at staffing reductions, uh, and reducing the deficit even further from the one-point-eight million dollars. With the goal of balancing the budget by the, the next fiscal year, um, this will require concessions from the safety groups. The, as you saw from the earlier charts, the safety groups make up, the safety departments make up roughly almost eighty percent of the general fund budget. If we don't have any, um, reductions in those departments, you can't really make the kind of impact of the magnitude that's, that's necessary. And by getting to a balanced budget next year, we also need to keep in mind that next year's a small increase in the PERS rate and the increase is much larger in the third year. And we've got to set ourselves up essentially to have a, a bit of a surplus next year as we kind of gear, um, for that following year. We've got to take that into consideration when we look at, you know, structuring, uh, labor contracts that are long-term. Uh, we've got to take into consideration the fact that there's going to be an increase in that year and we have, we have to consider that. We need to maintain a, a minimum level of, of cash reserves and we're, we're pretty close to there. You know, we're, at the end of this, once we make our adjustments, we're going to have roughly five million dollars in reserves and, and that's getting, you know, to the very precarious level. Um, additional goals of the budget, maintain frontline public safety services, um, the people on the street, the ones being able to respond to the nine-one-one calls. That still remains a priority. Focus on just the, the basic core services. Um, we really have to redefine, you know, what types of services we're going to be able to, to provide. Develop contingency plans. There's a number of pending legislation in Sacramento that could adversely impact, uh, the funding for the redevelopment agency. So that's, that's something we have to consider. And we have to also look at some long-term strategies for, for, um, dealing with the structural deficit. And a lot of that, eighty-three percent of our budget is, is, is staffing. So a lot of that long-term strategy is going to be in, in the form of our, our labor contracts. This slide, um, indicates the reduction measures, measures that we're proposing to reduce the deficit. Uh, the first item is a, is a, just a compilation of a number of different, um, supply services overtime, part-time hours, um, within various general fund departments, about two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. There's nine sw- non-sworn vacant full-time positions that are being eliminated as part of this for about three-hundred thousand dollars. We factored in, um, some non-sworn salary and benefit concessions from the miscellaneous groups, um, which is our goal in those negotiations. There's fourteen sworn officer, police officer positions, um, elimination of two re- school resource officers, uh, further reduction of police department overtime, around three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Also looking at, at measures to reduce the fire department overtime. The next item, the fire department FEMA grant, that's actually a net number. The department was successful in obtaining a grant for a little over three million dollars over the next couple of years to hire firefighters. It's roughly about one-point-five million dollars in revenue versus about six-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, um, in cost. So that's a net number, a net positive to the general fund of about eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. We have some excess funds in the, in the PDF funds that we can use to offset the city, the general fund's, uh, debt service payments on the Cameron Gym. And then we have, we've created some capacity in our Prop A funds. Uh, we believe we can go out and sell an additional two-hundred, additional amount of money to generate two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We've already have an agreement to sell a million dollars at seventy-five cents on the dollar. That'll generate seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. That's built into the budget and we believe we can sell some additional funds to, to do that. That's not built into the budget. Now where that leaves us, total, um, reductions, expenditure reductions of about three-point-eight million dollars and revenue increases of about one-point-seven million. The one-point-seven million is mostly the FEMA grant and the, the other item there is the Prop A sales. Um, again, total five-point-five million dollars in deficit reductions, which brings us back to revenues of fifty-one-point-seven million dollars versus expenditures of fifty-three-point-five million dollars. Just a tick under one-point-eight million dollars is the, is the deficit being recommended. Once all said and done, in putting those costs that we just talked about, the allocations don't look a whole lot different. Actually, public safety now makes up about seventy-nine percent of the general fund budget with just under twenty-one percent for the non-safety departments. The, the, the importance of the, the focus of the budget is still, is still on public safety. This is just a redo of that previous gap and you can see where it starts to, starts to pinch again right here in this current fiscal year as we get close. That's actually a one-point-eight million dollar deficit, but we still have the issues where the, the expenditures are rising in the out years, um, again, due to the pension costs. So while this is a good first step, there's still is, is work in, that needs to be done and is as we get into next year's budget. And again, this, this, it takes our cash reserve out a little bit further. It, it leaves us with cash at the end of this current fis- the next fiscal year of about five million dollars, um, about two-and-a-half million dollars in, in twelve, thirteen, cash will all be gone. But to do this, you would have to start eating into the, the redevelopment loans and assuming the state doesn't take action to, to lower that interest rate, um, that would be a bad thing. That's a significant revenue source, um, to the general fund that would be, would only make our structural problem worse if that were to go away. Look at staffing levels over the last couple of years. These are in two-year increments, eight to ten, and then the twelve being the current year in the blue. Uh, seven, eight, fiscal year seven, eight was our, was our peak employment time. We had four-hundred-and-forty-five full-time and employment, uh, positions. Um, it's dwindled over the last couple of years down to three-hundred-and-seventy-one in the current fiscal year. This does, the three-seventy-one number does include the six additional positions in the fire department that are part of that grant. Um, and they're, they're sorted top to bottom in the areas of the percentage decline for the departments over the, over the last four years. Um, total production of about seventeen percent reduction. This is a trend that will most likely continue. This is something that when we come back in that first quarter with further staffing reductions, um, this number, the percentage decrease number will, will grow higher as we, we try to further reduce staffing. Um, and this is how we compare. These are our labor market cities, full-service cities. Uh, we're down at the bottom at, and this is based on oh-eight to eleven. We don't have data from these cities on the eleven, twelve budgets. Um, that data's not out yet, so we compared from over a three-year period. We were the highest amongst our labor market cities as far as amount or percentage of staffing reductions over that period of time. And this chart shows us comparisons to cities with a hundred to a hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar population that are full-service. This is more throughout the state. And the intent of this is to show that, you know, despite, you know, our, our troubles and everybody else is having the same type of fiscal troubles, we, we think we're still at pretty good value for the money. We spend less, um, per capita than just about every other city in this popul- in this population range, um, at four-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars per capita. Um, the employee is again, is a, is a smaller number than any of the other, um, and a lot of those other cities I realize have, um, a lot of their functions such as utilities, um, trash, water. Um, some actually have, you know, electricity, that type of stuff. So, but the, the general fund, which doesn't include those other types of enterprise functions, um, you see we, we're very low compared to the cities our size within the rest of the state. And the final, final, it's just, it's our capital improvement program and this is pretty close to last year. I think we're at about three-point-two last year. This is a little bit higher, um, as we're, we're struggling to balance our operating budgets. There's not a lot of ability to do capital projects. Uh, most of the money is grant money, um, the big focus being on street projects. So this is, this is a trend that we have, we have to consider as we move forward, uh, being able to maintain our facilities and our infrastructure. So with that, I'll open it up for discussion and ultimately looking for a recommendation to approve the, the recommended reductions as put forth by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Bachman. I think that was a really good report. Want the public to know that the council, over the last six months approximately, has, uh, had to deal with some tough decisions. And you can see in that budget, some of those cuts were not, uh, easy cuts to make. Hopefully they can be, some of them can be reinstated in the future. But, um, let me say this about the budget. The budget is a plan. It, uh, isn't a, uh, fixed item. It can change, um, as, uh, revenues go up or expenses go, go up. But we, we set the plan in place and even though we're at, I think, one point, uh, was it one-point-eight million in a deficit? Um, I know the council wants to get it to zero, so we'll continue to work that way. Um, I also want to say that, uh, we have, uh, worked, uh, I believe with our employees groups and, uh, and tried to convey to them the message, uh, that, uh, you know, that the, the revenues aren't, uh, supporting, um, our, uh, structure here in the city and to ask for their cooperation and working together. It's a difficult time for employees. Many of them, uh, are hurting, um, and, uh, others, um, are receiving pay increases. So it's, uh, it's a difficult, uh, situation, but contracts are contracts. And, uh, I know everybody in this council agrees that when we enter to, enter to a contract, we will follow that. I will say this about our, our unions, um, you know, as you can see, the state, uh, creates havoc with the cities. And, uh, we would love to see our unions stand up to some of our state legislators that try to destroy redevelopment or, or some of the tools that eventually pay the salaries of our employees. We, uh, we want to work hand-in-hand with our unions, um, just like tonight when we talk about full disclosure. We want our unions to take positions that support local government, not state government. This is where their livelihood is made and it's not at the state level where some, uh, organization that they belong to dictates to them how they should react to legislation. Here in West Covina, we've lost a lot of money to the state over the last few years and it's, it's, uh, you know, to the point where we're really stretched. And, um, I know what the state would like us to do and it's to go and ask our residents for more money, more taxes, and that's difficult to do in this time. So, uh, with the help of our, our unions, um, perhaps, uh, they can have some effect on the state and, uh, stop them from taking more of our revenues than they currently take. So, do we have any other comments? Uh, city manager.
Yeah, uh, jump, uh, further addressing some issues with the state. And one of the things we, uh, we need to also recognize is when the state imposes unfunded mandates on us, uh, those costs can be very significant because we're obligated to still meet those, those, uh, those needs since they're legislative in nature. Uh, but I think up to now, we're about eight-hundred thousand dollars in unfunded mandates. Those are laws that the state places upon us to impose and, but there's no revenue that goes along with it. So we have to absorb those costs as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor number two.
And I, I believe, I, I have very, uh, deep concerns over this budget because I think we still need to do, oh, more. And, um, I understand how everyone's hurting that works here. A hundred-and-ten thousand residents that live in our city too are hurting. And we just can't look at one group and not remember the other group that actually, who we work for. They're hurting also. There's a lot of new legislation. Once again, I'm going to keep on harping on this. Daryl Steinberg, the speaker pro tem for the state senate, has legislation right now that will allow school districts, water districts, special districts to start imposing income tax, property tax, in addition to what you already pay the state. Separate taxes, separate structures. Uh, in a city like West Covina where we have nine school, or seven school districts, you could actually pay income tax different based upon where you live and you still live in West Covina. This is absolutely asinine and it, the collection method is going to be atrocious. Water companies, we have nine different water companies. Some don't have the ability to impose the income tax. So imagine if your water district can charge you income tax on your income on top of the state and the federal government. And then on top of that, the school district can. And how it's all collected, how it's distributed and how it's spent because right now the money, at least you have representatives in the city of West Covina. The money may be collected here in those cases because the school, school districts overlap different boundaries, but may not be spent here. And I think that's what some things Mr. Shoemaker was talking about on some of his issues, where the money may not be spent, where it's being collected at, or who's paying the actual bills. And that's, that's the stuff that's going on and they have people that are supporting that. And to me, that's absolutely scary out there. We're going down, uh, a dangerous path out there in government because the state can't do their job. The governor also spoke about they needed to eliminate redevelopment so they could hire police and fire. Let me tell you, in West Covina, the state of California and the governor don't employ one damn police or firefighter. Not in West Covina. That's a damn lie. Okay, we pay our bill. He doesn't pay a dime. All they're doing is stealing our money to fund their crap up in Sacramento because they can't do their job. And they'll give away the store to all the people. And we have our union, some of our union groups here are supporting the legislation to eliminate our redevelopment agency. Our own union groups. Not all of them. There is a union group for sure. And to me, their state agency that's, that they are a member of is supporting us being hit. And on top of the two, the one-point-five million, Tom Bachman spoke about the financing, what we can charge our redevelopment agency from ten-point-five percent to three percent. If they take our redevelopment money in total, that's like another two-point-five million dollars in hits on top of the one-point-five million. I don't know how many more times we can take these hits. Why those people up in Sa- Sacramento get flying across this world by all the lobbyists, being paid for by us taxpayers, why they're not doing their damn job. They need to get off the bottle of wine they're up there on, the whiskey and all the free dinners and start doing their job. And they're crushing local government. This is to me, the exact opposite of what America was founded on. We were founded on local government, you know, the best form of government is local. When's the last time you seen a congressman, a governor, assembly member or a senator really shopping at the grocery store? I can't tell you where I can't even go somewhere without running into people that I represent. And that's what local government's all about. They all hide up there. They come back on weekends if they even choose to, if they're not doing some more fundraisers. If you know the legislative life, Monday through Thursday, they do around fifteen fundraisers for that week. They go from fundraiser to fundraiser, fundraiser. It's, you know, Joe's doing it this week, then Sam, then Jose, then, then Benny, then, then, then you got, you know, Mike. You know, it makes no difference. All they do is go back and forth why America, why the state of California is being crushed, why they're not doing their job. And it's great to have representatives come down here, but in the end, we need to have the state quit stealing our money and tell them to rob from their own pocket. Maybe it's time for the state legislature and their employees to take some of the cuts. Because I know you come down here and you mean well, but as our employees take it in the, in the chin and getting crushed, it's not affecting the state legislature or their employees. And to me, that's, it's a have and have-not. It's really a disservice to come down here and say what legislation's happening here. When you're not feeling the cuts, you're not having to take the cuts. Our employees are, while you take the money and you live it up. And to me, that's the message I want sent back to our representatives. Quit stealing from us. We can manage our job. We'll get by if the state government was eliminated. What we really need to do is have the state legislature actually have to start working again, like other states have. If they actually had a job, most of those guys have never worked. They're full-time politician, that's all they've ever done. They've just gone from one level to another level. They, they've actually never had a damn job. Sometimes it's nice if you have to go punch a clock Monday through Friday. You may feel differently when the stuff actually affects you. They're concerned whether they're going to get their ninety-five thousand dollars they get paid annually come June fifteenth. And I know in that case, John Chang is saying he's not going to give it to them. But they also get per diem, which is tax-free. How much money do you guys get tax-free? They get thirty thousand a year tax-free of your money. It seems like all the money they get should be taxed. It seems like all the money they get should be taxed, and they should pay the special tax, the districts, everything they're supporting. They get $141 a day per diem that they do not pay tax on. It's just terrible. This budget, I am not going to be supporting it tonight. I think unfortunately, we need to go further, and the biggest thing I complained about three years ago when we went to it, or two years ago, is being closed on Friday. I think it's hard for government to, for the residents to function when they can't get to the services they need five days a week minimum, get into city hall. And I need to see that again, where our city halls open so the residents can access, you know, and we have people from the library here. The library's being closed down. I don't know where everyone's going to be in the future. Barnes &amp; Noble's what they used to use as a library, it's gone. So all we really have is the library, and the library's getting their hours cut, cut, cut. I don't know what type of government we're going to have left. I just would invite all 110,000 residents to go up to Sacramento, and on Monday, maybe we should start all attending their fundraisers they do, and just start impacting them and go ahead and, just go ahead and rush their parties and start eating all their free food and all their free drinks and see how they really like government in their face like this. I think it'd be a novel approach for the people up there to actually, the representatives of the city of West Covina, start seeing their residents up in Sacramento, and I maybe want to fund some of those trips to make that happen.
I knew it was going to get around to food. I'm hungry. Councilwoman Lane.
I just want to thank staff for all your hard work on the budget. I know it's been a really tough year, and it's been tough for everybody for quite some time, and I know you've worked diligently, and I appreciate that. It's my hope, though, that we can continue to strive to get this budget down, to balance budget. I know we're talking about within the next year, but the sooner the better, I think. And, you know, I know we started with a $7.3 million deficit and whittled it down to 1.8, which I think is pretty tremendous, and I'd like to see us continue to go a little further. I know the challenges and the hardships that we have with the current economy right now, and, you know, it's tough. It's tough on everybody and our employees, and we have great employees here in the city of West Covina, and I appreciate them working with our staff and with all of us to achieve the financial health that we need in our city to have a strong future. And right now, like I said, times are tough, and I appreciate everybody working together. So, thank you again for all that, and thank you to staff and the employees.
Councilwoman Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to say ditto to my colleagues. Mike, how he's passionate, hit the nail on the head. You've got a lot of problems up at your state level and at your federal level as well. As a mother of four kids and a, you know, and a business owner, they're not making any changes. They're stealing from our city, and so now we're having to deal with our staff and cutting back on our services for our people from our police and our fire. Is that right? And not only are we having to make those decisions, I'm having to make decisions at home to cut way back because I'm getting taxed higher. That's how they're balancing their budgets up there? And I just can't believe that we sit here and just keep cutting and cutting at a city level and cutting, cutting at a residential level, and they just keep grabbing from the taxpayer and grabbing from the city and saying, "Well, we need to balance our budget," you know. It's, and I commend staff and the council and the residents for keep shelling it out. You know, they're taxing businesses and tax, tax, tax. I mean, how much more can we bear? How much more can we cut? We're cut until where we're bleeding. Crime is on the rise. My son, 19 years old, can't find a job. All his friends can't find jobs. You know, we got to step up. And I thank the staff for doing what they can, and our unions, our police and fire unions, we got, this is tough for all of us. You know, we know we need you, we know we need our staff, but, you know, we unfortunately have to keep doing things like the mayor's directing us to do, and that is to go to the state and say, you know, when is enough? I mean, I've always had thoughts as, why don't we just cut the state completely and just have cities run their own entities? I think we'd be way better off and have a whole heck of a lot more money. Because if you look at some of the monies that are spent, like we collect money for tickets or things that we do as a city, a huge portion of it, we don't even get to keep. It goes somewhere else, I guess, so people can fly around and have dinners and stuff. I don't know what, you know, maybe we need to look into this a little bit more, but anyways. Everybody hang in there. Hopefully, if we all stand united and work together, and, you know, I don't know what we're going to do on this budget situation here. I'm just thankful to have work and money. Thought about turning off my electricity, but candles are pretty expensive too, so hey, you know, everything's expensive right now. Food, it's just expensive for everybody. So, but again, thanks staff and council for, you know, going through what we're going through together, and hopefully we can get this budget down a little bit more. I don't know how much deeper we can afford to cut, but thanks again for your report, Tom, and everything everybody's done.
Councilwoman Harpers.
You know, these are very difficult times. I like the fact that we are keeping the frontline for public safety, being that it is for the public. They're the one paying the taxes, and they need to make sure that they have public safety that comes first. But it is really difficult right now with a 1.8 million. I'm very proud of staff to dwindle that down to that amount. I concur with what councilmember Tui had said, that we need to write letters. We need to look to see where it is that our money is going in the state. That's absolutely ridiculous. I would love to see that we could be cut off with the state, because we in West Covina, we're doing a great job. We're spending money where it needs to be spent. You know, again, I just, these are really hard times, and hopefully we can get this budget balanced down to zero, and we're just going to keep dwindling we have till June. So, thank you to staff, and thank you.
Okay. Let me just conclude by saying that I've been doing budgets for, I guess, 21 years now. In the early '90s, we used to say we're cutting the fat, and then we cut the fluff, and this was the tightest budget ever. And throughout all that time, we had a pretty healthy reserve. You know, our eyes are focused on the reserve at this point in time. Five million at the end of this year, we have to hold the line on that. That means all of our departments have to come in on budget or under budget. It's critical, and next year is going to be another pivotal year for the city of West Covina. But I think the good news, if there is good news, is that we do have that $5 million reserve. We will, we have some great managers that can deliver. We have some great employees that are doing yeoman's job, and I want the employees to understand that this council appreciates the amount of work they do for the number of employees we have. As you could see by the list we had up there, it was strikingly on the low side for all the cities, it was the same size, and that doesn't go unnoticed by us, but in these times, there's not an appetite out there for raising taxes, so we will hold the line. Hopefully, our revenues will continue to grow. Last year, we did see some growth in sales tax, and hopefully that'll continue. So, thank you to our manager and to Mr. Bachman and everybody who's put this budget together. I do concur with my colleagues that we do need to continue to look at ways that we can either bring in more revenue or reduce expenses, and I think that we all have some ideas in that area, so we will be passing those on for the upcoming next few meetings, okay? With that, we have a recommendation to adopt the budget. There's a resolution. Would you like to read it, or do we not need to? Okay. Do we have, I'll make a motion to adopt the budget.
I'll second.
Okay, moved in second. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries four to one. Tui in opposition. City Council, Community Development Commission, request for reports. Any requests? Okay, any comments from any council members? Let me just make one quick comment. I was out of town when there was an article that appeared in the Tribune with regards to the Costucci Foundation. I sit on the board of the Costucci Foundation, and I was very disturbed by the article even appearing. And as with any right that an individual has, Mr. Fred Sykes wrote to the FPPC claiming that I have a conflict of interest, and I wanted to state that I received a letter from the FPPC saying that I did not have a conflict of interest and that everything was fine. So with that, I'll make a motion for adjournment. Tonight, we'd like to adjourn our meeting in memory of Raquel Flores, mother of West Covina Police Officer Eddie Flores, former West Covina Environmental Waste Management Commissioner Ricky Santell, and Mr. Richard Kinsler, who taught music for many years at West Covina and Edgewood High School. He was with the West Covaiers and the Trojan Ears, I think it was, yeah. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Flores, Santell, and Kinsler family as we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of their family members. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved in second. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.